When we had the opportunity to partner with the Historical Society on what we think could be a fantastic project over at Deerfield, and we'll get into all the details. It was your president very much wanted to be involved. And I talked to TJ, the President, TJ Egan over at the Historical Society. And here we are. So what a great turnout. I'm sure you got plenty of product, if not my force, but it's bad. And I'll introduce you. Mr. President.
Thank you, Terry. Good afternoon, all. Thank you all for showing up. This is a very good meeting here for the participants. Very, very happy that you all come out. Sometime back, I had a discussion with the Historical Society. The thing that we discussed was that there need to be a little bit more of an involvement coming from the Historical Society, recognizing African-American history within the city of Deerfield. Be talking to people around here. And I will tell you that meeting was very productive. The people from the Historical Society understood what I was saying and really embraced the idea. And that's what brings us here tonight. Before I get going, I would like to recognize some of our public officials. Former Commissioner Gloria Battle. Former State House Rap Brendan Clark-Reed. Former Mayor of the City of Deerfield Beach Peggy Dolan. And Terry did recognize my colleague, I'm so glad he's here. Commissioner Doug Rosky, District 4, City Commissioner. And thank you for all of you for showing up. This is good. So give yourself a hand of applause. So as I'm saying, you know, the Historical Society really embraced the idea of just getting involved in African-American history. Here's what brings us together as a city. What brings us together as a city is knowing all of its history, understanding its history, and then putting it all together. And so I'm very, very happy that they were able to do that. Now, what happened was that there was a grant that became available. And when that grant became available, and it was told to me, I felt that it was important that you, the city, you, the residents of Deerfield Beach, be constantly engaged in this, to understand, rather than there being a agenda from the city, you, the residents of Deerfield Beach, to be involved, to understand what's going on. And then let's see what we can talk about and what we can have come about for the betterment of our cities. So with that, I'm going to turn this now over to city staff. And they're going to explain to you in detail where we are tonight. And we'll have obviously some dialogue. But I want to thank all of you who come. I see a lot of young people here. This is good. This is a good thing. So thank you all for coming. And with that, I'll turn it over to city staff.
As the Commissioner mentioned, the Historical Society applied for a grant to kind of elevate the experience and make more present and make more people aware of how significant Deerfield, Richardson, Knowles Park and Memorial Cemetery is. Historical cemetery, I'm sorry. And I really appreciate it when they call us on that. So the President of the current link of the Deerfield Beach Historical Society is TJ Egan. He's put together a little bit of information about the grant, about why the Historical Society was so interested in doing this.
When we met, Ben made it clear in discussions with other members of the community, it was very pretty clear to us that despite maybe our best intentions, at this moment, the Historical Society is falling a little short in telling the history of the Black community of Deerfield Beach. It's not that we haven't tried. Maybe we haven't tried hard enough. But what became evident is that we need to tell the stories of the families and the pioneers and the issues that made up the history of Deerfield Beach. So that is the direction we were given and the reason we went out and got this grant in the first place. It became apparent to our attention of our grant writer, Poppy Mercier. I think that John Solis was also from the city involved in getting this thing off the ground. It was a grant that was put out by the American Rescue Plan. It is for African-American cultural and heritage grant. And it's mainly for construction and renovation of sites that will be housing Black history and are part of the Black history. So it's mainly a reconstruction grant that we applied for. There is, in addition to what we have for displays in Deerfield, Richardson-Knowles Memorial Cemetery, there is money, just to be, to give you a bigger picture, there is money to do some renovation on our property next to the Butler House, it's called the Pioneer House. That is done under the stipulation that it housed exhibitions of Black history in Deerfield Beach. So in addition to what we're going to be doing over at the cemetery and memorial, there will be some exhibitions at the, once that renovation is done, that'll be done at our Pioneer House. Hopefully, you know, after I sold this grant, we all sat around and listened. I know I had to, because this process for the grant is there. And everybody who's asking for money gets to give their little pitch on the why they should get it. And I realized really quickly that we did not ask for enough money. I can tell you that Miami-Dade County asked for a million dollars. There were, most grants were in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. We were the most, one of the more modest requests, which at this point retrospectively, we had asked before. Actually, the first round, after that first round of reviews, they cut it off. What they do is they give the money out. They had, at that time, $30 million that they were giving out for these grants. They start giving, awarding them. And when the $30 million is up, it's open. And we did not make the first cut. And although I thought, I think I told Ben, "We're gonna get this, Ben." But we didn't at first. And then the state, through the, again, American Rescue Plan, ponyed up another $30 million. So right now, there's a total of $60 million that the state put up. And we did make it into the second round, which we're really happy about. But this modest amount hopefully is just a start. We're not going to be able to do everything that everybody wants with this. But I am really encouraged that we are able to make some initial progress in trying to beat our mission of the Deerfield Beach Historical Society. Our mission is to tell the story of the diversity of the city and its ongoing development. So in the first line of our mission statement is to tell the story of the diverse people that have contributed to the historic development of Deerfield Beach. And so it is our mission to tell the whole story. Anyway, so this is not going to solve all of our problems. We're not going to be able to put up everything we want. But hopefully, it's a first step in this direction. There are additional grants that we can get. And if there's things that are left on the table, the city, I know, would be, we're talking to them about things we can do to develop it. The goal of this grant in particular, and I said, I think, I don't know if everybody's gotten a copy of what I passed out. Because I did, there's some tables that need a little more copies, which I will get. But we do have a timeline and kind of a projected budget for this portion of the project. The most important thing to me, I think to everybody, is to, before we get too caught up in what kind of art project we're going to fund, whether it's going to be the artistic expression, what we need to do, and what our mandate from Ben and others was, was to find out what is the story that needs to be told? Who are the people's story that needs to be told? And then hopefully, from that, the creative expressions of that will follow. So it's more important to tell the right story than put up a big piece of abstract art, which nobody does, but you have to really work to figure out what it's about. We need to, the first question we need to answer from the community is what are the stories? Who are the people? What needs to be told that hasn't been told? And then, once we find that, we'll find the correct expression of that mission. So what happened was, I didn't have the, this is the exact mission statement. "The Deerfield Beach Historical Society inspires public awareness and appreciation of diverse people, places, and events that contribute to Deerfield Beach's evolving history." So that is really our written statement. And so that is, we're trying to fulfill. So what happened in the past, about a year and a half ago, well, maybe close to a year ago, we got a call from Jen Schaper, who is part of, make sure I get this correct, at that time, she's right now, we're happy to be here, she's right now the historian and the archaeologist for the Mekasuki Indians.
Seminole?
For the Seminole, and she's got a tremendous job. Anyway, she was part of the group, along with Gloria Battle and others, who helped find the initial remains at the locations of Reddell and Richardson Knowles Memorial Park. Anyway, they had come up with some additional artifacts that had not been turned over yet. And they didn't want them to go to waste. They wanted to give them to the Historical Society. Jen, can you give us just a brief idea of what you guys found?
Yes, we found materials that were native of the Black people.
Do you want to come up?
Surprise.
Surprise.
Hi, everyone. I am Jen Schaper. I am a local historian. I do work with the Seminole Tribe of Florida right now in archaeological collections. I had previously worked for Bob Carr at the Archaeological and Historical Conservancy based at the DAVI. He had asked me if I would drop off a box of materials that was found in their archives to the Historical Society. And upon opening it, I knew it was a really special find. There was dirt from the cemetery, small amounts of formal bone, which is normal in any kind of archaeology we dig in South Florida. One of the things that was fascinating was there was a piece of wood. And I know that one of the things that they were tasked on doing was proving that it was a cemetery in order to protect and preserve it. We did want to possibly, if everyone agrees on it, rebury it in the cemetery where it belongs. It is culturally important to Deerfield Beach's community. And I find that would probably be the best way to honor Black history in Deerfield Beach in order to preserve and protect the history here. One of the things I did suggest to TJ on this project is, rather than coming in and telling people what's important here, what I need to be talking about in order to put up proper signage, in order to possibly create an outdoor museum exhibit to which somebody would be able to walk around, learning about Deerfield Beach's Black history. Instead of doing the research on my own, I invite everyone from the Deerfield Beach Historical Society and the Deerfield Beach community to tell me what's important to you. I think it's an important moment to listen, write, and speak. And I would love to hear from everybody on what you find is most important and things to highlight about Deerfield Beach's Black history. So if anybody would like to meet with me after the meeting, I would love to hear your stories.
Thank you, Terry. Always good. Thank you for bringing us. Just so you can get a feel for the commitment from the Deerfield Beach Historical Society's commitment to this, tonight, we have, from our board, Mr. Gordon Batch, our Vice President, Ben Studdings, Bill Mustenmeyer, our historian is Amy K. Tanner. Aunt Dietrich is here somewhere. I don't see him right now. And Judy Wilson is also here. Anyway, this is more people usually come to our board meeting. I don't know. Mike Lou, that showed up later on, so I wanted to recognize him. Mike Lou, the guy who's here. So what we need to do, we've been given a, when we wrote the grant, there was, we had to put in what we're going to use the money for. So there is, on my handout, what we call a tentative art installation timeline and budget. This can be, as I mentioned earlier, this can be altered. All we need to do is to stay within the guidelines. And we can do whatever we really need to do to fit our needs, as long as it's basically within the guidelines. So don't forget also, whatever we do, we can also do a display at the, what will be the Pioneer House. And so that is another avenue for us to tell the story of Black history in Deerfield Beach. We're open, I think Jen said, well, I mean, right now, we're at a point where what we need to know is what the stories people are that we need to address. So with that, I want to go back to Terry.
So you heard Jen saying, and TJ saying, we kind of have, we have an opportunity for something spectacular that serves two purposes, that helps to educate, tell the story, maybe dive a little deeper into what we know. And then also, an opportunity for this kind of sacred piece, returning some of those soils, which the Historical Society is in possession of now, back to the cemetery in the most respectful way. The idea has come up, and we'll ask some questions around this tonight. Is there an opportunity to kind of marry something artistic, but respectful with the return of the soil? We think there's some real potential around that. But you guys are going to tell us that when we finish your homework. Quickly, the last burials, known burials, were from 1937 to 1939. In 2004, so it's been a bit, the department started seeking, and the commission approved, started seeking grants to purchase the property. 2016, finally received a grant from the state Florida Department of Economic Opportunity to do that. 2017, the city received additional funding of $800,000 to develop the park. And a lot of the work was done, actually, in-house, because the budget was so, so small. So we're going to go through a few slides. This is circa 1966. And this is probably the best images that we could find of the cemetery when it was still recognized as a cemetery. You could see headstones, you could see, these concrete markers were used to designate burial sites. And that was the condition of the park in 1966. 2016, the archaeological research became intense. This is an overview of 2016. You could see where those diggings were taking place and where a lot of the history was confirmed and where a lot of the findings were found. Jen, do you remember which of those holes you worked on?
I think it was a perfectly excavation.
Okay, all right. Thank you. 2019, construction starts. And this is the early days of 2019. This was the vision of what the park would end up looking like. And this, of course, is the silhouette of Deerfield, Richardson, Knowles, and a baby. For those of you who don't know, she was a midwife and was heavily involved in not only helping the community, but also making sure that there was proper laid to rest. Unfortunately, in that day and age, labor was a big deal and still kind of is, there are a little bit of disparity. But a lot of women lost their lives during the birth, and a lot of babies didn't survive. So that's why she represents the park. 2020, that is the original artwork. I should bring up one. So in the top left, if you've been to the park, that is Deerfield, Richardson, Knowles, in that silhouette, holding into a sculpture shade, holding the baby. In the center is the Tree of Life. Many of you in this room probably donated to that Tree of Life, or have family members on the Tree of Life or the markers. And then in the lower left-hand corner was Veterans Memorial. And that was the original artwork. In 2021, the city had an opportunity to add a couple of art pieces before my time. One of them is the art that you can see if you're on Fourth Street. The top right-hand corner, you can't really see it on this picture very well. But it's a stainless steel art with a ball in the middle. And it fits in well in terms of style. And, you know, art often means a lot of things. In the very center of the park, in that oblong, looks like a football piece, there is a blue flame statue that was put, piece of sculpture that was put in there in the 2021 improvement. So a couple of things. If we do an art piece of some sort, there are some potential sites. The one on the top is an open space. There are concerns, and I have them personally, that it would take away from the memorial itself, being in close proximity here. The second is the largest area, and it is where the flame currently is. And then the third is the other large space, also problematic, because the interface between what we do and the Veterans Memorial, we want to make sure there's not conflict with that. So I don't want to be the one to say it. We're going to ask a handful of questions here. But one of the things I want us to think about is where would be a good location? And when we say art, you guys are going to define what that looks like. The potential sites of the flame, if we wanted to keep it in the park, and I guarantee loud and clear that there, I think there was a grant opportunity to add more sculpture, but I don't think, I don't want to put too much of my opinion in here. A sculpture park is often a sculpture park for the purpose of sculpture. This, we have to remember, is a historical cemetery. So I'm, you know, when you guys are going to break out in your groups here in a minute, I would like you to have a little bit of conversation around which area. And then we'll get into what is the meaning? What do we want this, whatever it is, to represent? You heard Jen say, it's important that we return that soil to that site. So let us, if we can, jump on in to what we're, what kind of the meat of the work we're going to be eating. So we call this an artistic sculpt work. It doesn't have to be any kind of art that we know of. It could end up being just a memorial that's completely separate. And that's for us to define tonight. So the first question, and this is probably the one that is at the heart of everything we're going to talk about tonight, is what is the most important message that we want to relay with this art? And if you can, spend some time, for those of you who haven't been here, you get your markers, and you chat, and you draw pictures, and you write words on these pieces of white paper. And then we take pictures and kind of bring that all to a culmination. So if you guys can spend some time on that first question, what is the most important message we want to relay with this art? And if you say, "We don't want art, we just want a hole and a marker", that's, I think we at least need to do something artistic to designate that site. But that's not my decision. That's why I brought you all here. Go ahead. Yeah, thank you. I should prepare. Do you want to come up here?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Dr. Ramona LaRoe. She's from the African-American Research Lab and Cultural Center in Fort Lauderdale Historic Sister. I am not from Florida. I've only been here four years this month. But I will tell you that I am a sixth-generation Melonichi woman who came here from Charleston, where my father was from. For six generations, and my mother was from Georgetown, South Carolina. Bahaa ona fadu. Exactly that. Anyway, I wanted to say, my experience comes from working with the African-Berber Round in New York City back in the 90s. Also, the Goa Society in Charleston, South Carolina. They were renovating the new G.R. Retarium in 2013, and they found 31 African skeletal remains. The city of Charleston wanted to just put them somewhere else, in another Black church cemetery somewhere. And the community refused. In 2018, we were fortunate enough to do a few things. We had a ceremony. We reinterred the bones after they were studied for DNA. We then took them in little boxes each. Lottie had her own little box, and then we put it in a large coffin of all of them. So we had this major, major event. And we also did DNA study of anyone that was from Charleston, South Carolina, to see if there could be some links. National Geo, Geo helped us. University of Pennsylvania helped us. So I'd love to talk to anybody who's interested. I particularly want to connect with you. We had a couple of archaeologists, and osteo-archaeologists and so forth. I'm also a genealogy person. So years ago, when I first came here, I learned about your cemetery. So I contacted this Gloria, and I told her my interest and what I had been doing in Charleston. And she invited me to come and meet her, and we've been friends ever since. In February 2019, I had a program to iron African history month. And we looked at four cemeteries, and one of them was your cemetery here in Deerfield Beach. And it wasn't even built there. So it's been really nice to watch the progression of what's going on. My question or concern is, it's important that we know where we've been in order for us to go forward. So my question, as an artist myself, is, how is the last art determined? Because it seems to be like a big question mark in this room about how that, those other two pieces got there. Like, who set the protocol for that? And is that something you can go back and look at your records and see? And why were these particular pieces chosen? Who, you know, who did they represent? Did they represent our community? When I say "our community," I'm talking about people that look like me. And so those are the kind of things that I want to see. Before we can talk about what we want to relay, we want to talk about our voice. Because lots of people tell our stories. When I say "our stories," African-American, African-American stories. A lot of people tell our stories. But it's now time that we do our counter-energies and tell our own story.
Amen.
So if I can support this group in any kind of way, I'm always available. And I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I think it's 100% in agreement, those who have spoken. The Commissioner mentioned it. Certainly, we as staff believe this is a community project. That's why we're at Community Engagement Cafe and talk about it. I don't think we can overemphasize that. To your point on the art, I know there was an opportunity for some grants. Like I say, the persons that made those decisions are not you. And it doesn't mean that this is why they're not here. It means we don't know what was in their mind, other than to think, "Let's make it a sculpture park." And yeah, flames are eternity. And Terry, you're absolutely right. If it's an eternal flame, it can be a memorial. For example, it's a memorial. If it's just the shape of a flame that doesn't necessarily make a memorial, although those two get mixed up a lot. So I think, I think we can look at, do those two pieces belong there? I think we as a city would love, or at least as a park department, would love to have a sculpture park that is just art-centric and not necessarily historic. And we have some ideas. We have some ideas, and we have some things that we covered before. The Public Art Committee on opportunities to kind of do the art expression. The Public Art Committee on opportunities to kind of do the art expression citywide, right? So what does that look like? And I think we have the opportunity, you guys tell us tonight, do those two pieces stay or do they go? And I, I think the best opportunity for site is at the highest point, at the top of the mound for whatever it is we come up with as a group. But I really do want to focus on, if we can, and I know there's a, there's a lot of history, and I'm totally agree with you, can go forward to recognizing Dallas. I think we have an important story to tell here, and I think it's important that this community define that story and how we want to present it. So with that, I'm gonna throw the question back out on the table for y'all to work on. What's the most important message we want to relay? And you don't even have to say with this art, we think it should be art, but you guys may come up with something else. So what is the most important message to relay?
Okay, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. But what I'd like for all of you to do right now, I would just take a second and look around the room. Take a second, just look, just look around the room. See all the people that's here, just take a second to do this. And here we find ourselves today talking about history, and specifically talking about African-American history. The one word that has not been used tonight is the word segregation, because when Black people came to this city, as was in this country, segregation was legal. So what does that mean? That means the history, much of what we talked about tonight, no matter what the significance is, no matter what the contribution is, it was born out of pain. It was born out of pain because of racism. I asked you to look around the room so that you could see the amount of people here, black and white, that was taking some very challenging times, that was crying with tears. Here we are today, twenty-two, trying to get it right, to tell the story, so that you don't necessarily take away the tears, but we celebrate the victories, and not just wait for the reward then. So we all like to be very proud that we can sit in a forum in such a way, and have an intelligent discussion about how we go forward, about recognizing the greatness of people that contributed here in Deerfield Beach, African-Americans, that really affect this country. That is why this country is different. It allows all of us to look in our history, and sometimes we didn't get it right. Sometimes we didn't get it right by law. But you know what? As long as our hearts are committed to do the right thing, we can sit down and have this conversation and talk about those that actually not only contributed in, in the sense of African-American history, but in the, in the history of the city of Deerfield Beach. That's important because it recognizes the good, and it has to be told. But a lot of the things that happened way back then, we wouldn't want to sit here and discuss because it was a lot of hurt, a lot of pain. That was the way it was, that was the law. Here we are today, not, those laws have changed, but we are not allowed things to be forgotten. That's how you make it better. That's how you make it better. That's how you make Deerfield Beach, all of Deerfield Beach, one city, recognizing its past, no matter how hard it is to recognize that, but celebrating the good out of that past. Being able to say to our neighbors, you know, this is what it's about, all of us coming together for a greater good. So that we all can be proud of the city of Deerfield Beach. I would like to thank STEM for putting this together. I would like to thank the Historical Society, because as I said, I sat down a while back and had a conversation about everything that we're talking about, and they, they were very receptive to the idea. And Mr. Egan said, "Man, you better be on, better, better tell it the right, right way." And I'm telling all of them, those folks overhead the Historical Society, never, I've never let anyone resist. They really love their city. You know how touchy it may have been for them to say, "We gotta wake them," but they backed up instead, and that, right, look at this room, this room is full. It's full because you have a lot of hearts in here. A celebrated mindset to do the right thing, to recognize those things that sometime hurts us emotionally, but we're determined to get it right, and we're gonna keep working on it, and we're not gonna forget it. We're gonna remember the, remember the tough times, the plight of so many people that hurt. But here we are today, celebrating the glory, continuing to do that as one city, not the Black community, but the entire community, and that is much better, and that's how we grow and improve today. Thanks, Ian, for coming out, we appreciate your time, and we're gonna continue this, and in the end, it's gonna be something that we all can celebrate if you have to allow it to that.